All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our study session on city AI initiatives and the GovAI Coalition Summit. Really excited for today's study session. Just before we jump in, let's call the roll, please.
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres, Cohen. Ortiz.
Present.
Davis. Dwan.
Here.
Candelis.
Here.
Foley. Batra.
Present.
Kameh.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a form.
Great, thank you. Just before we jump in, I just wanted to offer a couple of quick comments and thank yous. One is, I think it's, I'm very excited about the technological change that is, that we see happening, that's really centered right here in our backyard, in our region here. Artificial intelligence and machine learning are not new. People have been working on these approaches for decades, but there have been some really significant breakthroughs in recent years that are, I think, going to be, are going to fundamentally change the way that we do business in every sector. And I think it's important that this innovation permeates the public sector, because when we're at the cutting edge and adopt new tools, powerful new tools, if we do it in a way that's safe and responsible, which will be part of our conversation today, it allows us to create more impact for our community. And I just, I think that with the kind of new abilities we have with large language models and the kind of computing power that is being created, there's an opportunity to really fundamentally transform certain city services. So to me, that's what's really exciting. There's also obviously an economic development opportunity for the city, but I think today we're thinking more about the technology and the innovation that we can bring to bear on public services and the function of government. I want to just, as we transition, start with just thanking folks. We're very lucky in San Jose. And I think it's partly thanks to our location here that we have attracted and retained and built an incredible team at the city that really deeply understands technology and is working hard every day to experiment with it and ensure that San Jose is innovating and testing out new tools and developing new ways of delivering services using the latest technology. Most cities don't have that privilege. It's probably why the GovAI Coalition was really launched by San Jose and is now attracted over 300 cities and counties around the country who are coming to us. We're hoping to convene them to share information and best practices. So that's something we should all be proud of. Our city is leading, and we're leading in this area thanks to our incredible staff, including, of course, our Chief Information Officer, Kalit Tofik, our Assistant Director of IT, Jim Bersig. We have our data equity lead, Arthi Tangri, who has been really pushing forward best practices and increasing our data capacity across all of our departments. Our Products and Projects Manager, Namrata Batra Agarwal. Our Digital Privacy Team, who really helped launch that GovAI Coalition. That is, by the way, in this space, what everybody's talking about. People are looking to San Jose to lead the way, which is so exciting. And that includes Albert Gahami, Leila Doti, and Angela Zhao. So I just am really grateful to the team. I know there are others in the department and across the city working in this area, but the fact that we are leading the way nationally in the use of technology and specifically artificial intelligence, I think is really exciting. And there's a lot to learn, a lot of upside if we get this right. And so I think it's a great moment for us as a council to learn a little more about what city staff is doing and what these applications may be and how we can really maximize their benefit. I also want to thank my team. We have the Mayor's Office of Technology and Innovation, led by Stephen Keynes, who is in his own right really renowned in this space. And is working with Smita Bhattacharya and Keith Hertzberg on my team, who are doing a great job of helping us to attract new partnerships and grants, which is something that the Mayor's Office is uniquely well-positioned to do, because people come to a city, they have to want to talk to the Mayor's Office, and then we can direct them to Kalid and his team and make sure that we're getting the kind of full benefits of partnerships and grant opportunities. So with that, again, thank you to staff for putting together the study session. I'm excited to jump in, and I'm going to turn it over to Kalid.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments and kind remarks. Good morning, Mayor, Council members, and members of the public. I'm Kalit Tofik, Chief Information Officer. I'm here with my team from the Information Technology Department to share information regarding the city's AI initiatives, the GovAI Coalition Summit, and the work we are doing at a national level to establish strategic partnerships in this space. Team members from the Department of Transportation, Parks, Streets, and Neighborhood Services, and the San Jose Police Department will also be available at the end to take questions. I'll have the team introduce themselves before we get started.
Good morning, everyone. Albert Gahami, Digital Privacy Officer.
Good morning, I'm Leila Doti, Privacy and AI Analyst.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Angela Zhao, Privacy and AI Analyst.
Good morning, I'm Namrata Batra Agarwal, Products and Project Manager.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Arthi Tangri, Equity Through Data Lead.
Today's presentation will cover the artificial intelligence technology fundamentals and how the city of San Jose is benefiting by allowing or following the responsible and ethical use of AI principles, and how the city is collaborating with other agencies to gain their support for AI initiatives in government through the National Government, our GovAI Coalition. We have witnessed more technological breakthroughs in the past few years than in the past few decades. The San Jose, and San Jose is at the epic center of the innovation. As the capital of Silicon Valley and the home of many international high-tech companies, as well as the San Jose State University, the top source of engineering and computer science graduates in the region, San Jose is perfectly positioned to lead in government innovation. Our dedicated and innovative team have propelled San Jose to a national leadership level through the development of digital privacy, artificial intelligence, equity through data, cybersecurity, project management, and many other programs. Our city's rich history of community-based planning and civic engagement has enabled the implementation of advanced technologies supported by communities' trust in our transparency and commitment to privacy. Additionally, the Mayor's Office of Innovation and Technology, City Council, City Manager have outlined the vision to invest in impactful technologies to elevate civic services. It is no surprise that San Jose has received national recognitions, including the Bloomberg Philanthropies, What Works Cities Gold Level Certification, and the Digital Cities Award from the Center for Digital Government. Here are four key takeaways that I would like you to remember today. One, the city's strategic investment in innovation, mainly in AI initiatives this year, has exceeded all expectations, leading to improved efficiency and service accessibility. A prime example is a new translation service for the City Council. Two, by involving San Jose residents and staff in the innovation journey and offering hands-on training, we have fostered trust and support. These engagements have enabled the city to implement new technologies more strategically to serve the community. Three, our commitment to developing and adhering to responsible AI governing policy helps mitigate risks while allowing the city and its residents to benefit from AI-driven solutions. Four, establishing the GovAI Coalition has not only advanced the city's AI program, but also reinforced San Jose's position as the hub for AI innovation and a national leader in the responsible use of AI. So what is AI and how is the city advancing its AI program to benefit its residents? The aspiration to create computers that could think like humans has been around since the 50s. However, it wasn't until the 1997, when IBM's Deep Blue defeated a world-class chess champion, that a significant milestone was reached, demonstrating the potential for computers to simulate certain aspects of human thinking. The milestone was followed by IBM Watson's computer competing on Jeopardy in 2011, followed by the introduction of Google Advanced Translation Software using machine learning in 2016. Progress was gradual and deliberate until the past few years, when a surge of announcements, following the launch of the consumer-friendly tool, ChatGPT. Reflecting on the technology advances in the last 30 years, it is clear that each new innovation has brought its own risks, including cybersecurity threats and potential misuse, exemplified by the rapid adoption of the internet and social media. Had we implemented better cybersecurity safety measures and provided proper training 20 years ago, these technologies could have been safer and more effective today. By learning from past mistakes, we can establish safety guidelines to ensure the successful implementation of new technologies. Albert would now discuss the modern AI solutions.
Even though modern AI can feel incredible, sometimes magical, it really is based on a simple idea of finding patterns in data. And I want to walk you through it in a way that we can all see, frankly, do it together, and understand how AI works. What we have here is just some example data of median home prices in San Jose from 2020 to 2022. Say I wanted to understand what prices might look like in 2023. Well, a reasonable way to do this might be you look at the trend or you look at the pattern of how prices are changing. Draw a line through it and see, well, by the time we reach 2023, maybe we'd be about here. And lo and behold, when you look at actual 2023 median home prices, you're pretty close to where it is. And this idea of making a pattern or finding a pattern and trying to guess something based on it, when you take that simple idea and you do it trillions of times on today's largest computers, you get what you can think of as that magic behind AI today. And to show another example, let's talk a little bit about how AI learns and how that's similar in a way to how humans learn. So let's take the letter A. When we were taught how to read the letter A, we were shown different symbols that all result in the letter A. Maybe uppercase, maybe lowercase, maybe some different types of fonts. All of them, we were told, this is the letter A. And in doing so, we built these connections in our brain cells all throughout that said, all of these things, that's A. And it's not that far off from what we see with AI. With AI, you take a large amount of data. In this case, we call it training data. We use that training data to help the AI learn, similar to how we think about someone learning the alphabet. Except this time, instead of an eyeball, they might have a camera. You take that data and you run it through an algorithm. And in this algorithm, we are teaching the model important things. In this case, what is an A and what is not an A. And from that simple thing, run again and again and again, we eventually get to the point where a real-world application arises. Some of you may be familiar with automated license plate readers, the ability to take a camera and automatically read the characters on the license plate. That comes from this type of AI computer vision. And from that, we can identify that this is in fact an A. And while that might seem simple and is incredibly easy for us to do, what's valuable is that a computer can do it again and again and again without needing a person to be there and read every single license plate. These are two types of many different types of AI that we see today. You have prediction AI. That goes back to those median home prices we were talking about. Very valuable when we're thinking about using data to inform future decisions and policies is seeing how we can try and predict what's going to happen next. Then there's perception AI, or being able to identify things like what we saw with the automated license plate readers. And then, of course, we have probably the biggest talk of the town today, which is generative AI, or using technology and patterns to be able to create something. And I'll walk through a little example of what we see here. So in the same way that we talked about finding patterns in data, what ChatGPT and all these other tools do is they're finding patterns in data, except instead of numbers, they're finding that pattern in a sentence, words. In this case, we are able to use the almost-complete sentence, the San Jose Sharks are the best at, and ChatGPT's job is to generate the next word that comes after that. Of course, the answer is hockey. And that might seem very simple, right? This is something that you see your phone autocorrect or try and recommend to you, the next word. But really, what's happening behind the scenes of ChatGPT and Google Gemini and all these other tools is this. It's this done hundreds of times, so that you go from a single word to sentences, to paragraphs, to essays. And I want to walk through a little example here that we used to prepare for this meeting. We asked the simple question, what are five things that we can expect from City Council at a study session on AI? And in five seconds, ChatGPT generated for us these questions. These questions that give us a decent idea of what we might want to expect about improving quality of life, equity, protecting our residents, ensuring that the AI systems are as much as we can mitigating bias and involving residents in our decision-making. And don't worry, all of these questions, we have addressed them in the slides moving forward. But it's this type of technology that gives us a very quick, very easy way to understand what types of things we might be able to expect or what types of questions you should ask if this is a new topic for you. At this moment, I want to take a second to differentiate between this and something like Google, right? Search engines, Google, Bing, DuckDuckGo, all of these tools go off of a system of I type something in and it retrieves for me different articles, different webpages, things that exist out in the world. When I use ChatGPT, it's not finding those sources. What it's instead doing is taking its knowledge base, which was really all of these sources on the internet that it saw before, and generating something new from that, generating a summary of what it learned before on the internet. If we do that process in reverse, though, if we take content that ChatGPT might not have seen before and we ask it to summarize, that is where we have seen incredible value for us at the city and we've seen incredible value for our residents in accessing city information. I'll give you a quick example here of a council memo that is coming to you all on Tuesday. This is item 7.1, All Around Beautify SJ and our Neighborhood Blight Reduction Program. It is a 16-page memo, which, if I am a resident or I am just trying to get my feet wet and understand the topic, I might not be able to dig into that entire memo. But what I can do is I can take that PDF, I can take that document, I can upload it into ChatGPT, and I can ask it very quickly, hey, give me the five key points about this memo. And that's what you see here. On the output, we get some key points that we can start with. And this just helps you, again, get your footing in a space that you might not be familiar with. And it's really helped our staff in understanding how to get a first draft, how to get a first attempt, really get over that hurdle of writer's block that can cause so much time. Of course, you still need the staff to do their work, right? There are so many steps beyond this initial drafting step. There is, of course, making sure that these numbers are right, making sure that underneath all of this, there was actual work done that led to the creation of this memo, right? The incredible work that our Beautify SJ team does. But this adds a little bit of streamlining that we've seen have immense impacts on the way that we are able to do business across the city. Next, Angela is going to explore the many other ways that we are seeing AI add value to the city today.
Thank you, Albert, for introducing what AI is and some example use cases. I will speak to how we are using AI in the city to support City Council and Mayor goals. When exploring AI tools or initiatives, our goal is to identify opportunities that align with the City Council focus areas and benefit the community. Some of these initiatives are implemented and others are in the planning phase. We will be covering them more in depth throughout the presentation. To fully leverage AI for data-driven decisions, it is essential to upskill our staff. To prepare our staff and promote inclusion, we have developed two programs for technical education, one focused on data and the other on AI. Our data upskilling program was initiated in 2023 and is currently in its second iteration. We are investing in our staff by training our staff to acquire data skills as well as adopting and promoting data governance processes, since the foundation of AI is data. As a result of this class, one library security guard became an analyst at the library, because the class rounded out his previous knowledge. Our AI upscaling class began in 2024 in partnership with San Jose State University, where we developed a custom curriculum for our inaugural class of 20 participants. Class materials and recordings are accessible to all city staff, and we plan to expand the cohort going forward. AI tools are highly accessible and can streamline many services for city staff to bring more efficient and accessible tools for residents. As Albert demonstrated before, one AI tool is OpenAI's ChatGPT. And if you've used ChatGPT before, you will know that it excels at handling repetitive tasks with clear instructions. Our goals include helping our staff create AI tools for these repetitive tasks, such as summarizing lengthy documents. We have been actively training our staff, and the demand for this training continues to grow. Early results show that AI training significantly enhances staff productivity. After training hundreds of staff, we conducted a post-training survey in which participants reported saving more than 50% of their time on specific tasks. We continue to receive requests for AI training from both our staff and the community. We welcome these requests because it has led to major time savings and quality improvements, leading to more efficient and accessible services for residents. We are always available to assist with technical education to promote inclusion and move San Jose forward for everyone. Our contact information will be provided on a later slide. Another very popular application of AI is in translation, which enhances accessibility and efficiency for San Jose residents seeking assistance or information. The city clerk has been leading a pilot program for AI translation during City Council meetings. The tool, wordly, which you can see is being used up there, provides live transcriptions and audio translations in over 50 languages, all accessible via mobile devices. This method offers 25 times more language options at just 25% of the cost compared to our previous method, which relied upon in-person contract interpreters for two languages. Additionally, these translations can be added as captions below City Council livestreams and videos on YouTube. Based on the Spanish captions, the city has seen a 370% jump in views on videos from about 50 to several hundred, thanks to the investment we made in AI translation captioning. We also use AI translation with a different tool when responding to SJ311 requests. And 311 is the tool San Jose's residents use to report issues throughout the city. Here, we see that DOT is leading the effort to optimize traffic at intersections using AI by piloting a solution that manages traffic signals to reduce bus travel time. This has been piloted on bus lines 66 and 68, which many of our city staff take to work. AI optimizes traffic at intersections to reduce travel time by up to 20%, because buses are spending 50% less time at red lights. Less time idling at red lights also means that buses realize a 14% decrease in fuel consumption, as well as a reduction in emissions. And a more efficient public transit system also encourages the use of public transit. As we continue to enhance our staff's skills, we are learning more about the ways they are using AI effectively. And one exciting application is drafting the request for proposal solicitations, also known as RFPs. The purchasing team has reported saving around eight hours per RFP, or an entire workday, since ChatGPT is able to produce a rough first draft in seconds to minutes after receiving the necessary information. This allows city staff to concentrate on refining business requirements and editing the RFP into its final version, making the process much smoother than starting from scratch. DOT is also leading the project for using traffic cameras and AI to support Vision Zero, which is the city's effort to reduce and eliminate traffic deaths and severe injuries. You can see from the left-hand side what the AI camera sees, which is currently a bicyclist and a car. High accuracy levels for vehicle count and pedestrian count inform traffic planning and help answer key questions, such as how many near misses occurred in this intersection and how many cars ran red lights. AI can be very helpful, but it will be unable to reach its full potential and impact if we are unable to build trust on its use with our residents. I'll be passing it off to Leila to expand more on responsible AI.
So Angela just shared some really exciting examples on how we can use AI to help improve city services. But that can really only happen when we're also mitigating against the risks. AI is not a silver bullet, and with AI comes a number of different risks. And as you can see from these headlines, the potential harms from AI are very well documented. From racial discrimination to gender bias to major safety issues, we've seen the very real ways that AI can cause harm to people's livelihoods. And so in order to protect against these risks, we need to have a strong understanding of what's actually causing them. So this slide might look familiar to you. You actually saw this diagram in the beginning of this presentation. But I just want to call back and remind you that AI can be understood through three key components. So first, the data that's used to train the algorithm. Second, the algorithm itself. And third, the real-world application or use of that AI tool. And at each of these three components, there are different risks that can be introduced. There are unique risks when we're looking at the data. There's a whole other set of risks once we're developing the algorithm. And then there are additional risks once we start using that AI tool in the real world. And so what we're going to do right now is break down a few of these different risks for you all and explain what exactly we're doing in the city to help protect against those risks. All right, so for data, one of the biggest risks that we see introduced at this stage is algorithmic bias. And some of you may have heard of algorithmic bias before. Algorithmic bias is when an algorithm systematically disadvantages certain groups of people. And AI bias can be caused by many different reasons. The most common The most common way tends to be because of the training data. And what happens is that the data that's used to train the model is either not representative of the general population or the data could reflect historical patterns of discrimination. And what happens is that the algorithm will then learn those patterns of discrimination and end up reproducing them. So here's a really well-known example on the screen. In two thousand eighteen, Dr. Joy Bullenweeny, who is a prolific researcher in the A I ethics space, she uncovered racial bias in facial recognition tools. And that's her on the screen. You can see that she is a black woman with dark skin. And when she tested this facial recognition tool, she found that for some reason the tool was unable to detect her face. You can see on the left-hand side of the screen, it's not detecting anything. But when she put on a very simple white theater mask over her face, the tool started to work perfectly and it sensed a face. So, you know, what gives? Why did the tool detect the white theater mask but not her real human face? And the answer to that question is it's because of algorithm bias. The facial recognition tool was trained on a biased dataset that was not representative of the general population. And the tool happened to be very accurate for white faces and male faces, but much less accurate for women and people of color because it was trained primarily on white male faces. And if the people who developed this algorithm, they had used an unbiased dataset, if they had introduced data that was actually representative of women and people of color as well, then there's a good chance that this tool would have been more accurate. So algorithmic bias is clearly a very important risk, and the city is doing a number of things to mitigate it. First, we are currently developing a data governance policy that is, at the moment, going through review. And that policy is going to ensure that the data that the city uses is up to date, it's complete, it's representative of our communities, and it can be used to help build responsible A I. In addition, we train our staff through the A I and data upskilling programs that Angela mentioned just a few minutes ago to help ensure that our staff are informed of these risks and of the things that they can do to help catch and prevent them. And we also have a number of processes that we've developed, including testing A I systems before we use them, asking vendors to disclose, you know, how exactly are they mitigating bias in their products? And also working with residents to make sure that the technologies that we use are equitable and built on data that represents the broader community. And these components are all part of a much larger effort to build trust among the community and city staff through technical education to promote inclusion and move San Jose forward for everyone. All right, so moving on to the next stage where the algorithm is developed, a common risk that we often see here is something known as the black box problem. And the black box problem describes when we can't see what's actually happening inside of the algorithm. We put inputs into the model and it will give us outputs, but we don't know exactly how it's working or what's happening under the hood. And this lack of transparency can be a major problem if the system is being used for something like, let's say, determining if someone is eligible for public benefits, maybe something like food stamps. And if someone is denied food stamp eligibility from this algorithm, they have a right to know exactly why they were denied. And if it's not clear how the algorithm arrived at that decision, it can create major accountability concerns. And so to manage this risk, the city has developed and implemented the A I fact sheet. And the A I fact sheet is a really key transparency mechanism in our procurement process. You can think of the A I fact sheet kind of like the nutrition label on the food that we buy. And we require the vendors to disclose key information in this document. So things like the performance metrics of their model, training data, what kind of conditions the system performs really well in versus poorly in. And any vendor that goes through our procurement process for an A I system is required to complete this form and disclose this information to us. And so that really helps our team not only understand the capabilities of that A I system from a technical standpoint, but also from a strategic perspective if that product can actually meet the needs of the procuring city department. And so we created this document in two thousand twenty-two. It was recently refined by the GovA I Coalition, which we'll talk about more in just a minute. But I want to highlight here that we've seen the A I fact sheet really spark a shift in the industry at the national level in promoting greater transparency from our vendors. All right, and finally, for that third component of A I, the real-world application, there are a number of different risks that can be introduced here as well. Probably the biggest risk that we tend to see is when the A I system just doesn't perform accurately. And this can have discriminatory or even in some cases, life-threatening outcomes. We saw this with cruises in San Francisco when an autonomous vehicle unfortunately hit a pedestrian. We see this in chatbots that are used by companies and governments. What happens is that those chatbots will hallucinate or give false information. And so we see that in these examples on the screen, the chatbots hallucinated about airline refund policies or local laws for small businesses, and it ended up causing that airline to have to honor the false policy. And New York City had to clean up the aftermath of its chatbot telling residents to break the law. So inaccurate outputs can range from the mundane to even the life-threatening. But no matter the scale, whoever is using the A I tool is left to pick up the pieces. So what are we doing to mitigate this risk? One of the main approaches that the city takes is field testing. Before we commit to using a technology and spend, you know, tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars on it, we test the tool to see how well it actually performs in the real world. So let's say it's an object detection camera. What we'll do is we'll go out into the field and see, you know, how well it can detect potholes on a rainy day or at night before we commit to actually buying it and fully implementing it. And we do this with a lot of technologies. One notable example that I want to mention here is gunshot detection. And San Jose Police implemented a pilot to test the effectiveness of gunshot detection. The Digital Privacy Office requires annual reports from departments that use data-intensive technologies, including gunshot detection. And these reports have to include information like how often the technology is used, how accurate it is, and the value that the department is actually getting from that tool. And if you're interested, you can find all of these reports on the city's website under the Digital Privacy webpage. But getting back to gunshot detection, based on what the city learned in that gunshot detection pilot, including learnings that came from the Annual Privacy Report, police determined that the technology just did not meet their needs at the time, and so the pilot was not renewed. And I just want to point out here that this decision was made possible by, one, the available data that we had at the time, and, two, the very strong A I governance processes that the city has established. And actually, the city has been recognized on a national level for being a trailblazer on this very topic. This transparency reporting work around the privacy reports was recently featured in an article by Wired, where the city was referred to as a leader in responsible A I governance and as the only city in the country that requires disclosure of the accuracy of gunshot detection systems. All of this is to say that we have strong governance practices in place to mitigate against all the risks that we've covered today, including algorithmic bias, lack of transparency, inaccurate outputs, and more. And these annual privacy reports are really just one component of a much larger and robust A I governance strategy that we have here at the city, and Albert is going to share more about right now.
So as Leila mentioned, our A I governance and our approach to responsible and effective A I is built on three pillars. Those are focused on establishing a comprehensive policy that is backed by effective processes and managed by skilled, passionate people. On the policy side, the city takes a very education and forward-looking approach. One of the things that the city put out was our generative A I guidelines back in the middle of two thousand twenty-three. This was a very preliminary, very basic understanding of if you are going to use these tools, because they are free, they are out there, there are so many of them, here are the guardrails for how the city should be using them. And what we found is that this type of education proactive approach, giving people a way to use these tools responsibly, not only helped us stay safe, but it also enabled people to feel comfortable that they could test out these tools, that they could start to understand them and find ways that they are valuable for their work. Two is the processes. And this is something that Leila mentioned around our A I review process, our approach to transparency. All of these elements come together to make sure that at the end of the day, our policies are backed by something strong. And then, of course, we have the people. And this goes well beyond the people you see in the box today. Most importantly, this includes our community and the engagement that we do with them as we learn about the values and understandings around where they want to see and how they want to see technology in the city. You have, among them, our Digital Privacy Advisory Task Force, which is served in an expert advisory group of industry, academia, government, and civil society to help us understand what are the ways to navigate these new and upcoming topics. With this, we've been able to create a policy that is considered a national standard and has been managed and adopted by over one hundred or in the process of being adopted by over one hundred agencies across the country. This is something that we've been able to do in collaboration with the fantastic participants in the GovA I Coalition, where hundreds of us are coming together and solving these problems together. Within that policy lays out the values that we see. Making sure that the uses of this technology are based in ways that improve the quality of life for our residents, that they are accessible and they extend the equitable and fair access to the resources that we have in the city, and at the end of the day that we are protecting the privacy of our residents throughout our usage of the technology. When uses don't align with our values, we put them in the prohibited use cases, and that ensures that the way that we are doing this builds trust among us and the community. And all of that really boils down to how we understand the values and the perspectives of our residents. And this comes from our community engagement. Whether it be going to the interactive, the tech interactive, and teaching a number of grade school kids how to work and use A I, or it is going to our neighborhood association meetings and showing them, here is the technology that the city is looking at and how we could potentially use it in your area, to many, many things in between. We have found a truly incredible fact that once we engage with the community, we take the time to talk with them, not just explaining to them the technology, but ensuring that their input is heard. We have found an amazing transition from, why are you using this technology? To, I understand, here is where I want you to use it. Because at this intersection is where my kids walk to school and I want them to feel safer. Or this is where I never knew that I might get a scam call that could sound like my son. Thank you for informing me on that. Or this is how I can get more involved in my government, even though I don't speak the primary language of it. This is all possible because we are taking a human-driven approach to our A I policy and governance. Once we do that, when the responsibility is built into the foundation of our A I and technology systems, we can begin to navigate high-value use cases in a way that ensures value for all. And this goes back to things like using A I in an enforcement context, something like automated license plate readers, which has truly been a valuable tool for our police department. Within the first four months of using our stationary A L P R cameras, we've been able to solve over thirty notable cases from hit-and-runs, stolen vehicles, homicides. And not only can we use these tools to solve serious cases, but we also know and can communicate to our residents confidently that the data is managed securely, the system is accurate for our needs because of the privacy and the A I oversight and the partnership that we have been able to make across departments to ensure that everyone benefits from this technology. And this is not the only application, and I will pass it to Namrata to share another great use.
Another use case is the road safety condition pilot that tests A I-powered object detection as a potential solution for the city to identify and address road conditions before they become concerns for residents. Initially focused on vehicle violations, the staff recognized the broader potential of this technology to address a wider range of service requests, which are typically submitted manually through the San Jose three-one-one system, leading to an expanded scope for the pilot. City staff evaluated the technology for conditions such as potholes, trash, graffiti, and parking violations, focusing on privacy, accuracy, and effectiveness. This technology could make San Jose three-one-one more efficient as it would allow the city to proactively detect and fix issues, reducing the need for residents to report them manually. The primary goal of the first phase of the road safety condition pilot was to evaluate how A I-powered object detection could improve the efficiency of city services. This phase demonstrated that the technology aligned with the city's A I policy, ensuring it addressed equity, met privacy standards, and adhered to a human-centered A I approach. We would like to express our appreciation to District Ten for inviting I T D to conduct the pilot in their district during Phase One. The performance evaluation of the A I pilot revealed varying levels of success in detecting objects of interest. Potholes and trash detection emerged as the most successful use cases with the technology meeting standards for data privacy, object detection accuracy, and the potential to make the city's three-one-one services more proactive. With the pilot meeting the city's A I policy standards, staff will move forward to Phase Two with the support of the Toyota Mobility Foundation. Toyota recognized San Jose's leadership in A I and awarded the city a grant through the Toyota Mobility Foundation in partnership with U S Ignite to advance efforts in improving transportation safety for vulnerable road users and evaluate the technology's effectiveness in supporting city services. With support from the Toyota Mobility Foundation, city staff are currently working on implementing privacy protections within the technology, developing a request for information for vendor collaboration, and gathering more data via street sweepers to improve A I accuracy in detecting road conditions. To summarize it all, our vision is to achieve truly seamless government services. This involves transitioning from our current state, where we provide reactive services that respond to requests as they come in, often when issues have already reached a high level of severity, to proactive services that address concerns before they become a significant problem noticed and reported by residents. The ultimate success and the key milestone worth celebrating will be the reduction of the nearly two hundred and seventy-five thousand annual S J three-one-one reports by proactively identifying and resolving issues. I'm going to hand it off to Khalid again to take us through the remainder of the presentation.
The rapid advancements and availability of A I-based solutions following the launch of consumer-friendly tools like ChatGPT has created an urgent need for A I policies and skill staff to develop guidelines to assess the safety and effectiveness of emerging technologies. The demand for A I, digital privacy, data equity, and cybersecurity resources called for a large-scale response from the I T department. Fortunately, the city's commitment to investing in these programs enabled our team to build on the established foundation and adapt to the new challenges. Though this effort was confirmed with that numerous other agencies were faced with the same challenges, thus ensuring us that we weren't navigating these challenges alone and positions San Jose and positioned San Jose in a leading role. Recognizing the urgent need for a large-scale collaboration and coordination response to the overwhelming demand, the IT team saw an opportunity to collaborate with colleagues from other government agencies and incorporate the collective best work in San Jose's program. This led to the establishment of a new coalition supported by volunteers from local, state, and federal agency who shared a passion and commitment for innovation and safety. In November 2023, San Jose hosted the inaugural meeting of the GovAI Coalition, where we shared our current tools and drafted policies with other agencies. Fifty agencies participated in the first meeting, and by the next meeting the following month, the number of participants had doubled. This rapid growth has continued since then. The coalition's mission is to empower public works entities to harness the potential of AI for public good. Our objective has been to unify fragmented government AI expertise across the nation under common responsible AI principles. San Jose's leadership received a renewed national recognition, and within a few months, over one-hundred-and-fifty agencies adopted the coalition's guiding principles. Today, only four months since the coalition's first meeting, we proudly have over twelve-hundred members from more than four-hundred local, state, and federal agencies across the nation. This commitment, the commitment and the hard work of these dedicated government volunteers has allowed the city to collaborate with top-tier AI experts, creating leading AI policies and tools that ensure the responsible and purposeful use of AI in government. Large federal agencies have recognized this initiative as groundbreaking example of effective nationwide collaboration that achieved measurable results in impressive short time. In just the first four months, the collaboration released the AI policy template that has received endorsement from agencies nationwide, transcending political affiliation across the states, and the milestones highlight the true power of seamless, borderless collaboration in government. The coalition, the coalition has six committees chaired by different agencies, and the coalition membership is free. The coalition was created by government employees, four government employees united by a shared passion and commitment to innovation and responsible use of AI. The GovAI Coalition has grown exponentially in its first year thanks to the partnership we have established not only at the local level, but also at a state, federal, and federal level as well, including the White House, the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy, where we have invited and participated in their meeting twice this year. We are also working with the Department of Homeland Security and California Governor's Office of Government Operations. I would like to thank the GovAI Coalition founding members TriMet from Oregon, City of San Antonio, Colorado Department of Revenue, City of San Diego, City of San Paul, and the City of Long Beach. These partnerships have placed San Jose and the coalition on the map as the hub for innovation and responsible use of AI. As such, presented the city with the opportunity to host, to host an event first of its kind for government. On December fourth, the City of San Jose and the GovAI Coalition in collaboration with Caltech will host the GovAI Coalition Summit at the San Jose Convention Center in the heart of the Silicon Valley, the global epic center of AI and innovation. Attendees will explore cutting-edge AI trends and best practices while developing a vision for AI, for AI in government for the future. This event aims to foster responsible and effective use of AI in the heart of Silicon Valley. The summit will bring government agencies to discuss AI in person and establish a national vision for responsible use of AI for the coming years. The event will host five-hundred attendees, and registration was sold out earlier this week. Mayor Mahan will open the summit on December third, and the city manager, Jennifer McGuire, will open the summit on the second day. San Jose was recognized by both public and private agencies for our leadership role in responsible use of AI. This acknowledgement, acknowledgement has earned the city recognition from prestigious entities such as the Wall Street Journal, the White House, and international agencies eager to learn from the City of San Jose. While the support and recognition bring promising opportunities to the city, our priority will always be focused on the safe and responsible use for AI for the residents of San Jose and being transparent with how the city is using technology to enhance city services. As we reach the end of our presentation, we would like to share four key points. We have shared a lot of information with you about how the city is a leader in the AI space. To recap, we would like to remind you of four main key takeaways. One, the outcome of the city's intentional investment in innovation and especially in AI initiated this year exceeded the expectation and achieved higher efficient and service accessibility. Two, engaging San Jose residents and staff in the innovation journey and providing hands-on training to leverage AI, foster trust and support between residents and the city, and enable the city to be more strategic as we implement new technologies to serve the community. Three, the city, the city's discipline in developing and following the city's AI policy allowed the city and resident to mitigate potential risks while benefiting from AI solutions. Fourth, by founding the GovAI Coalition, the city advanced its AI program what affirming its national leadership position in responsible and effective use of AI. Our theme this year emphasizes the importance of collaboration to ensure the safe and effective use of AI in government. We encourage you to invite our team to your neighborhood and association meetings or community events and to discuss AI and how residents can benefit from AI solutions. We seek, we seek your support for the city's AI policy and the GovAI Coalition and the guiding principle to ensure responsible and safe use of AI. I would like to thank our city partners for their continuous support. All this work was made possible by the dedication of many staff members, both within and beyond the Information Technology Department, including our partners from the Department of Transportation, Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, Police Department, and many others. We couldn't have achieved our goals without the continuous support from our city council, city manager, who prioritized innovation even during this year's tough budget cycle. The city's investment in keeping San Jose at the forefront of innovation is delivering measurable results. Special thanks to the mayor's Innovation and Technology Office for introducing the city to opportunities, grants, and new collaboration. And last but not least, I would like to thank my staff for doing a phenomenal job by really leading this effort nationwide. This concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Khalid. Really appreciate the report and all the work you and your team are doing. San Jose, as a big city, as the capital of Silicon Valley, should be the most efficient, responsive, capable, technologically-enabled city, and you all are doing the work to help us achieve that better future for our residents. So I'm just grateful to you all, and I appreciate that the council's been very supportive of the work that you're all pursuing for many years now. So proud, proud that we've taken this leadership position, and it's fitting, again, given where we are here. Why don't we turn to public comment if we have any, and then we'll come back to the council?
James Campbell?
Artificial intelligence has the potential to transform not only education and civic engagement, but also employment, employment practices, and public policy. AI can enhance transparency by generating key-term documents and summaries for council meetings, making public information more accessible and actionable. In employment, AI can streamline hiring processes, identify biases, and support skill development. Through personalized training programs, however, AI becomes more integrated. It's critical to understand copyright laws to ensure that the use of data, content, and algorithm respects intellectual property rights, and public policy must also evolve to address AI's impact on labor markets and protect workers' rights and promote ethical use. With thoughtful implementation, AI can empower communities, improve decision-making, and foster fairness, ensuring that technology serves as a tool for growth, not exclusion. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you. Turn to my colleagues. We'll start with Vice Mayor Kamai.
Thank you. I guess I, I really want to thank you, Khalid, and your staff. This is truly, truly impressive, impressive, and I'm, I'm so excited that here in the City of San Jose, we're leading the charge. And, and with that, I'd really like to thank the mayor for his leadership and his staff for all the wonderful work. We've gone a long way in a very short amount of time. So I think that this is, this is really, really good because everything is pointing in that direction. And there's so much that we can do using technology. I wanted to find out a little bit about to what extent AI is used in our 311 app, and, and if so, how do you make the corrections? I mean, you talked about, you know, what has been with data and bias and transparency in the algorithm as well as doing the field testing. But beyond that, you know, I think that there needs to be some level of oversight. And I totally understand that, in fact, we want trust by engaging the community. And the only way that I, that I think people can start understanding the positive roles of AI is to demonstrate the value and that it works and that when corrections need to be made, that we're able to make them in a timely fashion. I know that in my district, 311, you know, their response when you close it and there's no understanding of, well, I just reported it, so why is it closed? Is it the wrong thing? You know, there's no feedback as to how that all happened. And as far as the individual is concerned, it's still a problem. So I'm just wondering, what is the loop that is used to ensure that the responses back are, in fact, accurate?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Kamai, for your question. I think AI as a technology will provide some solution, but I think the human in the middle is really the key factor for a lot of the interactions and the decisions that needs to, to be made to make sure that tickets are not closed prematurely. And if we are closing the tickets, we're providing sufficient and clear communication to the public to know why we're doing it. In regards to the use of, of AI to make sure that we're, we're not creating issues for us, we started the pilot last year in District 10, and the goal was really to test, retest, and triple-test to make sure that anything that we will be automating is bringing value in a safe and responsible manner. It is really easy for a lot of agency that they got excited about the technology and they jumped into it. But the team here has been deliberate in defining the policies, the tools, and the testing, and the, and, and the guidelines to make sure when we go forward, we are using technology while being fully aware of the benefits and, and the risk associated with it. So to wrap it, to, to complete my answer, I guess, and to summarize it, I, I think it's going to be both. Some of the issues that we have raised is related to how some of the departments are dealing with the tickets, and we need to reexamine how we are processing and tracking to make sure tickets are not closed prematurely. And when they are closed by mistake, we need to find a way to go back and reopen it, at least to find a way to receive that feedback and communicate with the departments. But as far as the AI, that's also going to be part of it because we believe if we can see it before the public can recognize it, then we might have a chance to fix it early enough for, for this issue to be gone before it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I think, I think having sort of the, the combined, I mean, it's sort of like when I use a translation app and, and I read it, sometimes, you know, it's not accurate, right? So I have to go in and, and fix it myself to be able to ensure that what I'm trying to communicate is the correct translation, right? So I just want to make sure that as we move forward and, and we do field testing and all of that, that there's some level of oversight. And I'm really glad that the data governance policies are going to be coming because I think that that's what will sort of set the, set the foundation for us moving forward and ensuring that, yes, in fact, these are the ways. And I think that the public would be delighted to know that, you know, we've thought it all the way through because I think that that's one of the hesitancy that I have found, at least in my district, that, you know, there's sort of this, well, I don't know, you know, it's all machines and, you know, where is the correction part, right? But if we can, if we can have those policies in place, I think that'll go a long way. So I just want to say thank you. I'm super excited, and I think it's going to get us to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to quickly clarify that we are not using AI to respond to requests. We're only using it for translation on SGA 311 currently. I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that in the future, it may be a way of being able to respond to different requests that do come in. And, and so as we're thinking about how else to utilize, that was my initial question in terms of to what extent because I think that there is a role in that, but I think that it may be a combined sort of role where, you know, you ensure that, that we, that we get it right to the, to the consumer or to the, to the resident.
And Vice Mayor, I want to add a little bit to that, to what Namrata said. So we are using language translation on our 311 app, which is an AI tool. But then that language translation is also being used in the virtual agent, which also feeds the virtual agent translation. So we have some AI component that's resident-facing as well, but it's not service delivery.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilor Batra?
Khalid, thank you very much for covering this very important topic. Like the mayor said, that this is going to have an impact. The AI is going to have an impact on every aspect of our life, whether that's a government, whether in personal life, business, everywhere. So thanks for covering the whole range of topics which are relevant for us to be able to adopt this technology, promote this technology, support this technology. I do want to say that I'm grateful that you agreed to do the pilot in District 10 because that's the field I come from. So it was a great opportunity to work with you on this technology advancement. And I really liked the way you proposed the project and what the goals of the project were and how you conducted the project, making sure that the privacy concerns of the people were addressed. We made sure that the resident knew what we were doing and what we were not doing and what we were collecting, what we were not collecting. So that goes into the area of trust. I think as overall, the societies want to have three Ps, which is they want to be proactive in taking care of the things. They want to be preventive because we do not want to be suffering from something and then taking corrective action. We want to be preventive. But in order for those two Ps to work, you need to be predictive. And I think when we were here in 2017, the floods which happened on the east side, our predictive tools were not very good. We could not tell how fast the creeks were going to rise, the water level, and we suffered from that. I remember working at that time to be bringing the technology, which will be more predictive. I remember working at that time to be bringing the technology, which will be more predictive about the rate of water flow and everything else. Today, what you described on the AI side, it has all those three components. It has got a lot of predictive capabilities and hence it's going to give us the proactive and the preventive nature. So I'm looking forward to getting some of these things tested, implemented. And your approach to the validation is extremely important. And you forming this coalition with the rest of the cities so that they can all advance and benefit from the innovation in this city. So I will be willing to be having any other pilots you want to do in District 10. In fact, I would love to have them start there. And then after the proper validation, we go through the normal RFP and all that. And one question for you, when you did this pilot, how did you find these various vendors?
Thank you, Councilmember Batra for your question. And we really appreciate your support and inviting us to participate in Phase 1. The first phase of the pilot was done through an RFI, a request for information. And we invited vendors to participate. And unfortunately, we did not get the number that we were hoping for. So the decision was made at that point that we're going to keep the RFI open to allow vendors, anyone that's willing to participate or to demo. And through that process, we gained a few of them to participate and we conducted most of the testing in District 10. We're looking at Phase 2 and how can we structure it in a better way? And we're working with procurement to issue the second phase of the RFI and to collect and solicit more information from the technical community to see in the last one year, what kind of advances we can see. And I just want to share one thing that the hope that we were looking for is, or the goal that we're looking for is to have one solution to detect as many objects as possible because we don't want to put 50 cameras on a car. And we're realizing that a lot of vendors are focusing on one or two. So through a lot of conversation with vendors in the last, you know, nine months, we're seeing that they're starting to be open to the concept of multiple detection. And we're hoping to see some more of that in the second phase of the RFI.
Thank you. Since this is a very fast-evolving technology and the number of vendors and space, now some of the people who may not have been able to participate in the pilot because they were either not ready or they didn't contact us in time, will there be an opportunity for them to be able to come forward and somehow get plugged in?
Absolutely. We're working with procurement to release the new RFI, hopefully in the next few weeks. And I think through the GovAI Coalition and the attention San Jose has been getting, a lot of vendor watching everything that we do. So I'm really hoping that we can have the ability to attract everyone, even outside the US, to come and demonstrate what capabilities or new, unique capabilities they have so we can find the best advanced, safe way to move forward with it. But that's really the goal for Phase 2 and we're hoping to get started very soon.
Okay, that's very good. The Toyota's involvement, I really appreciate that they are a forward-thinking company and have given you the grant to get this thing done. In their grant, are there any strings attached which make thing for Toyota only? Or it is an advancement of the technology and a betterment of the city? Or is there anything strings attached for personal or the benefit of that corporation which is giving the grant?
I will start that the grant came from the Toyota Foundation, which is not really the Toyota company. But I will let Albert elaborate on some of the scopes or details of the grant that we have received. Albert?
Thank you Khalid. Albert Kohame, Privacy Officer. The Toyota Mobility Foundation grant provided to us $260,000 in order to pilot and test this technology, first and foremost, to ensure safety for our vulnerable road users. That includes bikes or cyclists, walkers, rollers, and of course, making sure that our roads are safe for our driving population as well. The pilot and the terms of the agreement have no requirement that we are using Toyota vehicles, that we are improving Toyota technology, that it is, this is a, the Toyota Mobility Foundation is very explicitly separate from the corporate arm that they have. We do have the potential opportunity, if we would like, to partner with Toyota and we are exploring opportunities. However, those opportunities can be explored with any and all companies as well. And we are continuing to explore, as Khalid mentioned, through the RFI process.
Okay, that's very good. I'm really glad that the Toyota has been that generous. Hope some of the other ones come forward and allow us to get some more of our pilot validation done and position us for adopting the technology at the earliest possible time. But certainly when it is mature enough, that it's going to give us the value. And I thank you Khalid, thinking about the value it's going to provide with complete trust from the residents. So whenever you're ready for another pilot, please let me know before anybody else comes to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thanks, Councilmember. We appreciate you in District 10 being willing to be the guinea pigs here so we can all learn. It's great. Councilman Jimenez.
Yeah, first and foremost, thank you for all the work. I appreciate it. I'll premise my comments by just saying that some of the questions I ask, I'm not, this whole topic's fascinating to me, but I'm like a kindergarten, first grader, trying to better understand what's happening. You see, I can't even talk about it. And so I just ask for you to understand that as I ask these questions, I may not ask the questions correctly, just given the information. So the first thing I would say is that just a few thoughts on the presentation, there was a lot of information. As you know, I think we were an hour in after, about an hour or so after the presentation. For those of us maybe that aren't tracking this topic as closely, I think maybe in the future, if you give this presentation, I'm off the council at the end of the year, but if you give this presentation or educating folks in the future, I say it'd be good to maybe stop after each slide or a few slides and say, any questions? Because try to go back and think through some of the questions I had as you were going through the slides, I think, just some feedback. But great information, very fascinating. What I'm wondering is, well, a few things. The first thing that interested me is about the bias and the data and such, the algorithmic bias and lack of transparency and some of the other things you touched on. So it makes sense to me as it relates to some of the data that we gather as it relates to city sort of functions, like potholes and things of that nature or license plate readers. But it also, what comes to mind is that there is some AI usage that we're using data, say, in writing reports and things of that nature or other things I can't even think of, as it relates to grabbing data that other people are producing or aggregating, if you will. And so I'm trying to understand how we manage the concerns around bias if we're getting data from someone else to produce reports, if you will, as in contrast to creating the data ourselves in potholes or whatever it may be. And I hope that made sense.
Completely, Councilmember Jimenez, and thank you for the question. Every time we think about an AI system, you have to start with, as Leila mentioned, the data and thinking about where that's coming from and how that, similar in the same way to how whatever I've been shown throughout my life is going to color, it's going to change the way that I view things, similar to the AI system. What we do is make sure that at each step of the process, from the data, the algorithm, to the application, most importantly, especially as us as users of these systems on the application side, that we are doing it effectively and responsibly. How this looks for things like the text, the writing, the memos, the all that stuff that's been happening for the last couple of years, really comes down to a few core tenants in our generative AI guidelines, which are available to the public. They are underneath, they write work that we have done alongside our privacy policy, our AI policy, our AI manual. Really comes down to, one, make sure that you're fact-checking this stuff. It's a simple, it's a simple point, but in the same way that we don't trust everything on the web, to not trust everything that comes out of an AI system. And providing that education to our staff, first and foremost, as they start thinking about using these tools. Second is making sure that we, as a city, take a proactive role in editing and mixing the content. We ensure that the data that we provide into these systems is only data that we are comfortable giving to the system, right? So no personal information, nothing like that. And making sure that that sense of ownership translates into this is a first step, this is not the final product. And I think that that distinction and through the upskilling program that Angela mentioned is really how we are ensuring that our staff are using these tools effectively and responsibly. Because you're right, as much as we would love to, we don't own ChatGPT, we don't own Microsoft Copilot. But what we do own is what we choose to release out to the public, and that is what we can control.
Okay. A few things that come to mind as you're answering. So just broadly speaking, ChatGPT or any other, you know, company or entity that's creating, you know, this content that's produced via AI, you had talked about, again, this goes back to maybe, there's a lot of slides, the sort of the, trying to identify trends, if you will, right? And looking back, and essentially, they're just mining data, producing a result, right? It seems to me, just in my mind, that's the way I think about it. And so can you help me understand how the current technology that exists in the world, in the States, California, whatever it is, obviously, a lot of the data out there, I mean, it's skewed, right? And what I mean by that is, as an example, if I, you know, if the folks developing the algorithms are, I'm just making this up, right? But just to paint the scenario, are straight, older, white dudes that went to Ivy League schools, they're creating the algorithms. How can I, how can we be sure that what's being produced is indicative of the very diverse nature of our world? And, you know, even as an example, we know this is a wonderful country, but it also has had its challenges over the course of its history on race relations and things of that nature. And so I'm curious, how does the programming and all that data mining sort of parse out sort of what the true reality of the world is, if you will, as it relates to patterns and such? How do we know that we're not, that the data we're getting, that these companies aren't perpetuating some of the racism, some of the actions that have happened throughout the world? I'm trying to wrap my head around that, right? How does that shake out?
Councilmember Jimenez, your concerns are very valid and appropriate, and it's echoed by the concerns of this team. Our bottom line is we cannot trust anything that comes out. We cannot even trust that our data is clean because there is inherent bias that we might have in our own data. Just think about it, the data that was collected 40 or produced 40 or 50 years ago, what kind of population generated this data? It wasn't the average person that had a PC or has access to computers. So just by that fact, we know that some of the data was produced by a certain group who might have access to education or computers that while others did not. So your question is valid and 100% on the spot for that. And that's why we say that we will put so many measures and so many filters and so many checkpoints to make sure as much as possible that when we use data, either we produced or we purchased from outside, that we're going to go through a rigorous process to make sure that data does not influence the system in a negative way. The second part, just like any other system we do, we're going to test and test and retest. And the final issue we'll do is we're going to pilot and discob the potential impact and risk until we feel comfortable that we, results are getting are aligned with what we believe to be the right answers. And then, and only then, we'll ease the restriction and we'll expand the exposure. The same thing happened with the, with the object detection in District 10, that we did not trust that the vendors will do the right thing. We did not trust that our data will be managed in the best way. So we continuously investigated and looked into things and checked and invalidated and confirmed. And that's why we feel that we need another pilot before we feel comfortable to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll shift my questions just to something, well, obviously the same topic, but can you remind me, so back in 2023 or last year, the GovAI sort of coalition was formed. I'm trying to, I was talking to Councilmember Foley, you know, I can't remember what I ate for lunch yesterday, so my apologies if I don't remember, but did it come before us as a decision point for the council to say, hey, go ahead and start this or join this or create this and go ahead? Or how did that happen?
Good question. The coalition is not a separate entity. It was mainly a group of volunteers in government that we came together and we solicited their feedback to kind of help us advance our policies and our tools in this arena. It is not a legal entity, it is not something other than the San Jose team kind of providing a platform and a Zoom meetings for different government agencies to come together and share and collaborate in developing some policies and tools.
Okay, so it didn't, it wasn't something, I mean, I think it's wonderful that we're taking the lead, by the way.
Thank you. There are a lot of conversation where we want to go, but whatever, if we do anything, it has to be transitioned in a formal, legal format. But at this point, we, because the rapid change of the technology and it's growing faster than we expected, there are some consideration for other things that we might consider in the future.
Okay, I would just, yeah. So it seems to me, based on your answer, that at some point in the future, given the advancement of the technology and where this GovAI entity may or may not go, right? If it takes a more formal, you know, it seems pretty formal to me, based on what I read, that there may be a decision point for the council at some point.
It could be, there could be a possibility in the future.
And then the other question related to GovAI that I had is, you know, I feel like every other day I read an article about the godfather of AI is saying, we got to be careful and we should hit the brakes and slow down and all this. And I can't help but think as we talk about these topics, Terminator and, you know, the pre-crime unit from this movie that I saw years ago, all these things come to mind, right? And so does GovAI, given that it's a broad coalition, I saw the map of the United States, it seems like it's all over the place, mainly the east coast, west coast, with some others sprinkled in between, but are you, are you all or are we all taking a position as it relates to the cautious nature that some of these folks are preaching that we should take as it relates to the advancement of AI?
I will give you my personal opinion and I'll let the team chime in if they want. If you look at the technologies introduced in the last 30 years, and this is actually one of my slides when I showed all the advancements in AI. And if you look at all the advancements and what these technologies brought to us, including the iPhone and social media and everything, and you multiply that by 10,000ths, we get close to the potential benefit of AI. At the same time, if you take all the concerns that we had because of social media, cybersecurity, privacy, and everything that we learned in the last 25 years, and you multiply that by the same factor, 10,000, we have the same concern about the risk. So it is benefit and risk and we want to, my position is I want to make sure that we are at the bleeding edge of understanding and driving that technology. But at the same time, we are as fearful as possible of that technology to make sure that we're not implementing something that's going to come back and bite us. And one of the things that we discussed in the coalition, if one of us get a black eye because of AI, all of us will be tainted by the same color. Because after all, all of us are government employees, all of us are government agencies. So when New York, something happens in New York related to chat, and I tried to bring something to council to approve a chat, I'm going to be tainted or questioned by the mishaps of some other agencies. And that's really one of the beautiful things that we have with the coalition, that we are helping each other out to figure out what's going on and how can we be in a better position to defend and identify potential risks as a government entity versus being fragmented into cities, counties, and states, because all of us are faced with the same challenge.
Right. And on that same line is GovAI, I mean, because I think we've sort of lifted it up as we're doing all these wonderful things, which I'm glad we're taking the lead and all. I mean, because I think we've sort of lifted it up as we're doing all these wonderful things, which I'm glad we're taking the lead and all that and bringing together all these different government agencies. But is there, is there a policy position or a statement of policies or whatnot that GovAI, that the coalition has taken as it relates to federal legislation, looking at how AI is progressing and just the thoughtfulness of it and the policies?
We caught the attention of the White House Office of Technology, the Governor's Office, the Homeland Security, and they're really interested in the work that we're doing. Especially that we are, we're capable or able to attract great minds throughout the nation that are willing to volunteer their time and energy to work with us. So there is a lot of conversation happening where they're trying to understand from us what we're seeing as risks so they can implement certain policies at the federal and national levels. But they cannot move as fast as we can. Just getting something passed at the federal level might take years and months or, and we're, what we're doing really, we're implementing things in days, weeks, and months. Just our template AI policy was established in four months. And when we got hundred and fifty agencies drafting that and agreeing that this is something that they all can work with. If you try to do something at the federal level, instead of four months, it's going to be four years or even more. So that's why I think the, the balance between what the federal level is doing and what we're doing is very interesting to them, that they see that a lot of what we're seeing can influence their, their policies and a lot of things that they're seeing can influence what we're trying to do in a, in a quick way.
So, so do you, do you see the GovAI coalition as, as having a role in helping to set the tone and tenor as it relates to the advancement of AI on the national level? As it relates to the possible implications of this technology sort of moving at warp speed, if you will?
I think it's already doing that.
It's already doing that.
We're getting calls from every major vendor, asking us to be part of the conversation. We're getting a lot of involvement from major federal level departments that want to be a part of the conversation. And we, the coalition has already established that. It is unique, that has never been done before, where, you know, twelve hundred government employees in a brand new, cutting-edge technology come together to, to deliver something meaningful. So everybody's still trying to understand what is this? They've never seen it before and, and I've never seen it before. And I don't think I'm going to say anything this in the rest of my professional career. But it is that thing that, that this team has been able to put together and attract twelve hundred employees, four hundred agencies to dedicate their time to, to work with us. There is at least one or two meetings taking place every day from one of the committees and working groups. And again, this is not an entity that is structured or paid or anything like that. It's just people finally in government found a way that they can pour their energy in something meaningful that they feel is going to have a great outcome.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. I guess I'll just, I have one or two other very quick questions, but I'll just say that it seems like you, it's wonderful the work you're doing, bringing together all these different government agencies. I think it seems to me mainly exploring what are the applications of AI and how it can better the lives of residents in all these cities across the country, which is wonderful work. I guess I, as this coalition cements a little further and it grows and it becomes a little stronger, for lack of a better word, I think it'd be interesting to see what role the coalition has to play a part in the larger philosophical conversation around the future of AI and its usage in our society. And so that's where I was getting at. But the other thing I'm curious about is you talked about the data upskilling and the AI upskilling. I'm curious, is that, it seems like that's within the organization, the different departments? Or how do, how do folks tap into that? And I'm curious if the different council offices and all the employees we, we help to manage and guide have access to that? Is that?
So this is our second cohort that we are running right now for the data upskilling program. This is, this was made available to all city employees. But it is still at a very small scale because we are conducting it with just a team of three or four. So we are limited in how many staff we can train at a given period of time. But we're looking at options to expand the number of people we can have in the next round.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the very last thing I would say, because I'm being pressed, because I've gone over my time and reset it a few times. And by the way, I turned off my microphone because I got to clear my throat, not to reset the time, just for clarity, just for clarity. You guys will learn how to do that later. But anyhow, the very last question I have is the December fourth, fifth summit. It sounds very fascinating and interesting. And I'm wondering, you said it's sold out, but I'm wondering if you have any available tickets, even if the nosebleeds for some folks up here that may be interested in attending? I think that would be appreciated.
Councilmember, if you have, if you have time to attend, we'd love to have you. Just let me know what day you want to attend and we'll love to have you. Going back to the training, this team is available anytime for your staff or for you to have any conversation. Just invite us to your committee meetings, invite us to your office, we'll be more than happy to go over the presentation again. Any training that you need for AI or for data, by all means, just let us know and we'll be more than happy to participate and support.
Okay, thank you so much for all the work, appreciate it.
Callan, actually Vice Mayor Rosemary Kamei also asked about that information. I actually had sent you a text. If you could get the information to all of the council members, just give an, send an email out with the date and times of it so they can let you know if they would like to attend. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's a great idea. Got to watch out for those veteran council members, they learn the mic trick. Before you know it, they're just going on. Appreciate all the questions. I will note, I think one of the things about the GovAI coalition that's worthwhile is that, as I understand it, part of the reason we became a bit of a convener and had people coming to us and this sort of monthly Zoom call took on a life of its own, was actually that the city had done long before any of us even hit, going back about eight years. So maybe not long before any of us, but going back about eight years ago. I'm giving you credit here. The city had started engaging external experts to talk about privacy and data security guidelines and that we had done more advanced work in that area than other cities. And so others started coming to us being like, well, what are your privacy guidelines? How do you handle cybersecurity? And then I think that monthly Zoom call sort of took on a life of its own. I will say to Councilman Jimenez's point, while we have talked about the GovAI coalition and the budget message, we did have a memo actually that we passed that discussed it a little bit. If the city and city staff are taking on more work here, I think as we've had the White House and State Department and others come to us and Homeland Security, I think we need to ask them for money and assistance. I think they need to be providing funding, staffing. I mean, it's great for us to play this convening role and we should continue to lead here, but not at the expense of delivering services to our residents in San Jose. So that will be a tension we have to navigate, given that I think the growth of this and the traction was sort of unexpected, to be honest. I think it just kind of took off over the last year, which is, which is great. But others need to help carry the, carry the burden financially and otherwise. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Foley.
You sure? My turn. Thank you so much for that presentation. I am, like Councilmember Jimenez, overwhelmed with the information that you gave to us today. But you explained it in such a way that now I sort of get it and I understand. I've always thought about the risks involved, but you really articulated it clearly in a language that I can understand as someone who's approaching this as a kindergartner and not even at a first grade level. So thank you for that. And now I've elevated myself to probably fifth grade level, possibly, although I don't think I'm smarter than a fifth grader. I do have a couple of questions. Colette, I appreciate that you use the term leading and fearful. It is important that if we are leading on AI, that we also approach it in a fearful way because I think our residents are concerned about it. I'm fearful about it too. I'm fearful about the bias, the, the access to the information, who's creating it? How it's being interpreted? So I have questions about the staff upskilling. How are we training our staff to be aware of the bias that might be available in the AI that they're, the ChatGPT that they're doing, that they're obtaining?
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. And I can speak a little bit to this and then I want to offer it up to the rest of our team, who can definitely speak more to this than I can. One of the best examples of this and the way that we really take an approach is build a sandbox for people to play in, going back to the kindergartner metaphor here. Give a sandbox for people to play in, let them play in it safely, and let us all learn together those risks and those benefits. One of the conversations that we had, this was almost a year ago now, early on in our education and, and upskilling processes, we talked with Department of Transportation. And we showed them, we asked ChatGPT, hey, write us a introduction paragraph for Vision Zero. And it said on how, I believe the numbers were something like, City of San Jose, the ChatGPT said, City of San Jose had sixty fatalities in two thousand twenty-three. That is not correct. And our Department of Transportation was very quick to point out that that number was not correct, right? And it's those types of moments, making sure that people have those moments in a safe and controlled space so that they get it. They understand that it can, it really helped them maybe get a bunch of fluff in there, get that, get that writing juices flowing. But at the end of the day, we are the source of truth. And having that training, both from an AI perspective, how to use these tools responsibly and look at them with that critical lens. Because you're right, there are biases, there are things that we do not have full control over. But we do have the ability to edit, filter, and adjust these things to make them useful to us. But they don't overwhelm us.
So that is included in the training of our staff? The few staff members that have taken it at this point? The, the bias and the fact that this is a draft? I really appreciate the RFP and how this is saving time, but that this is just a draft. So staff isn't then taking their, they're instructed that, okay, you can use these tools to create the draft RFP, but that's not the final product. The final product needs to be human hands-on, reviewed for accuracy, removing biases and things like that. So we're, that's, is that included in the training that we're going through?
Yes, Councilmember. Every time that we provide this training, that is one of the first components that we touch. And it's one of the key points that we hit by the end.
Okay. And, and I want to echo Councilmember Jimenez's request that I would love to have my team trained on this or the Eighteenth Floor team and myself trained on it. It's just, it's such new technology for me. Frankly, I haven't used it, but I guess I'm going to have to try and figure out how to use it and, and see what it does. I can see it helping me write silly things like thank you notes. You know, that might be not silly, but important to help me in a level that won't show a bias or anything. So I really look forward to that opportunity. I have a question. So one of the uses was on road conditions and checking, looking at potholes and object detections and involvement with San Jose Three One One. And to be concerned about vulnerable road users. This actually came up in my Vision Zero Task Force meeting yesterday in how we're going to monitor and make our roads safer for vulnerable road users. So I'm assuming we're working with the Vision Zero team on this and Department of Transportation as we go forward?
Yeah, absolutely. This is something, we've been working with them very closely and the team has been very engaged. Not only from the technology, but how can the technology help the business of achieving its goals?
Yeah, that's wonderful, thank you. And it seems to me that there may be a lot of policies that need to be generated as a result of this. And there may be additional staffing and funding needs. So what kind of, or when will those policies start coming forward to us? And I'm assuming the funding needs will come through the budget process. But do you see something in a request for the budget message next year to maybe include ChatGPT and efforts around AI and this type of technology?
There is a potential, I think it's a little bit too early. I know the budget cycle is going to be starting very soon. But this is one of the things we're, we're working with DOT to see what is the right thing to move forward. I don't think we are ready to move something into production yet. But I think there might be some pilots that we can coordinate with some funding to, to make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Okay, great. I really, I really appreciate the presentation. It was very helpful to me, again, as someone who didn't quite understand how it all works. And now I do, and you've, again, explained it in a way that I can pick it up and then translate it into my brain so that I can use it in a way. I really appreciate you lifting up the bias concerns as an issue that we all need to be concerned with. And then, of course, the privacy and security issues are important as well. So saving time with our staff, that's critical. We are going to be needing to look at how we can be more efficient with our staff. So this is, has a tremendous opportunity for us and I really look forward to how it's coming, going to come back to us in different ways. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm, I'm appreciative of it and I learned a lot. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Councilmember. I don't see any other hands. I thought maybe I'd help wrap things up with one question that I'd love to hear you all react to. If you could just, you covered a lot of ground. And there's so much we don't know and so much coming. But if you could help guide us to maybe one example, hypothesis you have of one or two, certainly no more than three, of applications of AI in the coming years, let's say over the next couple of years, where we can expect with high likelihood that residents will experience a meaningful improvement in city services? A real, they will, they will, they will see, they will feel, they will directly, concretely experience something being a lot better from the customer, the constituent perspective, say, two years from now? I don't mean to put you all on the spot. I know you've highlighted a lot of, of areas of opportunity, a lot of work that's in progress. But where do you, what is the lowest hanging fruit that you see at this moment for a couple of years from now? Where our residents are going to say, wow, the City of San Jose really improved X. What is it? Is it that we proactively identify all the potholes and fill them and people never drive over a pothole again? That would be great. Is it, is it language translation? Is it our Three One One service? Is it like, what, what, what do you imagine two years from now, we're going to be celebrating with our residents is dramatically better because of these new tools? I know it's a tough question, but.
I'll go last, but I'll ask the team to, to see if they have, share their opinion first.
I think potholes are definitely low-hanging fruit. And that technology is quite, it's quite mature in the AI space as well. That would be the most low-hanging fruit that I can see.
Don't be shy.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I think if we're talking low-hanging fruit and we're seeing some consensus around this in the coalition, Angela can definitely speak more to this. But one of the lowest hanging fruits is around translation. I think one of the biggest opportunities that AI presents is really expanding accessibility of certain services for residents. And language access is, of course, a major priority for the city. With Wordly, we're already seeing that right now. Yeah, exactly, right now in the city council meetings. And I think that the potential for that kind of AI translation to permeate city services will only increase with time.
I'll just build off of that because it, it's from an access perspective, not just in the translation of the words, but also in a translation of the terms, in making all of this material and content. And frankly, government jargon that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, making it so much more approachable for our residents to understand and really engage with us. We're already seeing this in cities and agencies nearby where they're using tools like this to translate memos into regular human speak. And that type of accessibility is something that empowers. And that type of accessibility is something that empowers not just the residents who have been around the block and understand the city services that we've had, but the residents who are either new to the city or they've never understood how to contact. Between that and, as we've mentioned, the proactive services, being able to catch things even before our residents need to ask about them, those are two areas where if there is the technology, there is the potential. And if we can get the, the ability to push forward on those things, there's a lot of value that we could show residents.
Can I, can I add something? So this is not something that we've talked about, but an, an idea that I have that potentially, there's a solution somewhere, but resident engagement, resident feedback is something that we can really look at. We have all of these different mediums through which we receive resident feedback and we can potentially use AI in gathering all of that and really building that into how we respond to those.
I'd also like to build on the translation aspect, actually. So one thing that's been really inspiring is that when we went to a neighborhood association, we were telling them, you know, you can use ChatGPT to translate your concerns into English. And that was something that really resonated, that they could simply write what they wanted in Spanish, translate it, and have a much easier time discussing their concerns with their council members.
Awesome.
I would conclude. I'm sorry, I'm not resetting my timer.
You're trying to get more time, aren't you?
I would conclude with the following. If we can think about when the iPhone, the first iPhone was introduced, it did not improve one item or one service, it changed everything. AI has the ability to do that multiplied by one hundred. And I was just having a conversation the other day that it changed how we behave as humans. And I was using the example, twenty years ago, if I was sitting with my family and one of my kids took a report or a book over dinner and, and started reading it, I would have been offended. Today, we can pick up our phones and do things, you know, that socially accepted, that if we did exactly the same thing twenty years ago, would have been offensive. So it changed how we behave as human and what's acceptable, what is not. What I'm really seeing is the breakdown of government silos. And the coalition is really telling us something unique that there is no more city, county, state, and federal. All of us are thinking in the same, similar terms. I think AIs will allow us to aggregate our service in a meaningful way. And I'll give you an example. If you, if somebody chats with a city chatbot today in San Jose and says, I need to open a restaurant, what do I need? The answer will be, you need to get a permit from the city, you need to get a, a business license, you need to get things from the city. But really, the answer should be, you need to get a health license from the county, you need to get a business or incorporate the business by the state, and you need to file taxes with the federal level. So if I go by the Amazon model, we're not going to be able, we're not, we should not be focusing on delivering city or services as a city. But hopefully, AI will allow us to deliver service as an entity of government, regardless of who's responsible of what, of what. And, and I always use this example for Three One One. When people call nine-one-one in New York and report something in San Jose, they don't call and hang up and call Three One One dash one. They just triage the call to San Jose and we take care of the business. I'm hoping government will transform how we deliver services with, in a seamless manner. Regardless who owns it, we'll be able to triage that ticket or that service to the responsive party or parties and provide it in a seamless way.
I love that answer. I think that's really insightful and a, and a great place to wrap up. That gives us a lot to think about. Thank you. That's awesome. Well, appreciate the presentation and the work you all are doing, keeping us at the forefront and, and really keeping your eye on value for our residents. So we, we appreciate it and I, I don't see any other hands. So I think with that, we will go to, well, we did, I actually called for public comment earlier, didn't I? Okay, well then I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you all very much.